Call the Roman.
Mr. Clement.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here.
Mr. Dumpy.
Here.
Mr. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Boo. Mr. Sonic. Yes.
Motion to, excuse me, to the next meeting.
Taylor.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic. Yes. Mr. Clement.
Yeah. Okay. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the last regular June twenty-second and special reading? Motion to be approved or not?
Ms. Tingle.
Yes.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic. Yes. Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes. Okay. Auditor slash treasurer's report. Good evening, everybody. We're starting with the treasurer's report, which everyone should have a copy of. Mr. Mullane sent this out earlier today. We've got the May two thousand twenty-three treasurer report. On the first page, account balances as of May thirty-first. We have six point two one eight million seventy-five dollars and ninety-six cents. You'll see the record of, excuse me, record of investments on the next page, which shows our money market accounts as well as the CD accounts approved by the investment committee and our year-to-date interest of forty-seven thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars sixty-eight cents. It's minimal, so what we've got last year and the year before combined. And we'll say that way, it's almost the Fed. Mr. Powell, keep rates high. And I should pass on the treasurer worked with Peoples Bank on the ten fifty account just last week. It will go from two point seven eight to three point seven eight in the money market. We're getting additional funds for June. No offense to Peoples, they said, can we start July first? He said, how about today? So, uh, pretty good deal for the city. On the third page, you will find the bank reconciliation payroll as well as EFTs out. For example, we have our first major sewer plant payment. It was under the understanding of, well, many of us, that the first sewer plant payment would come after completion. However, they give you twelve months of grace from the original scheduled date. So we began these twelve months behind, but not quite as behind schedule as the project, which is scheduled to complete August first. So you'll see that about twelve, thirteen lines down, large USDA payment. And I just wanted to bring your attention to that. On the next page, you will see the book postings. And see once again down at the bottom, though this one cost us much more time and work than the last four or five months, which were pretty smooth. This one took some, uh, very close attention to detail because our vendor who processes utility bills, I don't want to put it all on them, but it was the last thing we found. They actually sent us more money than they were supposed to. Just never, the worst position to be in, but they actually send a file where we upload into the books how much money came in. And twenty-three dollars sixty cents over several transactions spread throughout two months. Well, uh, free transactions. And they will be debiting those soon. So I'm sure they'll appreciate having their money back. And we appreciate a chance to get a balance. So that's the treasurer's report. I'm gonna steal this house here. So I can pull up the auditors. So we have here, May two thousand twenty-three, Nelsonville City Auditor's Report. Financial summary, we have revenues of May two thousand twenty-three, one point five million, just over one point five. We have expenses, one point two eight million. Both of those, again, I'm gonna say this for a couple more months, are much higher than the city's usual amounts because of the sewer plant project. Very large amounts coming in, grants and loans, very large amounts going out. Major fund balances, you'll see things to, well, a couple of things, number of things. The first time, all funds combined over six point one three five million. I have a competition going on with the school district who the city's never had more money than in the bank with, and we're creeping pretty close with this total. I made sure to let a few board members know. And we've got general funds, street funds, capital, water, and sewer here. You can see their balances. Here's our statement of cash position, which is a little tough to pull up. But it's on the website. Yeah, I can't get that. A little bit in there. But the full report can be found on the website. I can give it to anybody anytime and can provide some more requests today. Here's our credit card report. Full transactions of the city's use of the credit cards, you can see here. There are a number of transactions, um, which, by the way, one of the reasons we report this is we're required to by state law. City hasn't in many years. State law changed two thousand sixteen. And so required to show city council, we have transactions from Microsoft for the citywide emails and other Microsoft supplies and costs. One company is notary supplies, training and notary in the police department. We have uniform patches, fire department command strips, diamond bright for the pool, mental health symposium and training costs, gloves, the website hosting fee, training costs, refund of taxes on training costs, so on and so forth. You can see here. And some final items, I wanted to say a couple of things. May is the month the property taxes come into the city. It's not the month that residents pay it. But I was asked to clarify one thing at every meeting to help folks with information and in particular misinformation. And so I wanted to say quickly about property tax. Everybody pays their property taxes, it goes to the county, the county balances. They take their fees and then send the city portion. If you look at your property tax bill, you'll notice the city's portion is usually last to second last in terms of size, with the highest being usually the school districts and county. So that little part that says Nelsonville on it, I don't want to diminish it, but it is usually smaller for everybody. Goes, they take their fees at the county, and then they send the portion to us, the first portion in May, second portion in September, October. Though it is a large payment of two hundred seventy thousand in May, that's just four percent of the city's operating budget and revenues, just to give an idea of how many different revenue sources and strains the city needs to operate. We did receive those in May. And, uh, it packs the general fund, the two thirty street fund, everybody's street levy, and the three hundred parks and recreation fund with our half a mil rec levy. So just a little bit of how things work behind the scenes. Once you pay, write that check to Rick Wasserman's office. Quickly, I wanted to mention a couple of things that was mentioned before the meeting, and I had my report. We have a citywide water line survey. It is to see how many folks are impacted or potentially impacted by lead water lines, whether it be in their structures or something else. It was on the bills, if anybody got it in their mail today, they should have, possibly Saturday, maybe, but probably today. You can find it at the website, you can get copies in paper here at the office, and if you call in and request, we can mail it to you. This will help us with fixing those lead lines in a phase through.
With the two phases of the turn, they are wanting to replace and clear into the houses. And EPA's want to replace and clear into the houses.
So state federal money to fix lead lines, all you gotta do is do a quick little survey. I think it may involve some water testing eventually.
Yeah, but it tells you on there what to do, what to look for.
So you can find it online in the office, so on and so forth. We're happy to help. And we need volunteers to take those surveys so that we can design the project appropriately. I was asked to mention the consumer confidence report. The EPA requires us notify residents multiple ways. It is online as well as available in the office in paper form. I want to make sure that residents here at home are notified. And you can also find this report and other reports online. Last two quick things, I promise. State auditors were on site this week and last week. We have a new set of auditors, they're actually state this time, not just contracted out private sector. They seem like good folks, they've been very involved. And we've been able to provide and perform on every request and test so far. So I'm glad to have them. And the last thing is I wanted to bring some attention to folks because I wanted to bring some positive energy and vibes to the setting. In particular, is my second attempt to bring attention and focus on the employees of the city because they do so much for the city. And so I wanted to say, since we last met, we had several employees who hit anniversaries. I notified them all today, though I'd be name dropping them. May sixteenth, Adam Bunny hit one year. Judy Smith hit eight years of service, two weeks ago. Fowdy hit nine in May. We have Susan Harmon, you see her name there, Susan, was hired as the council clerk, June first nineteen ninety-seven, with a small break in service, I think that brings you twenty-four years, twenty-four, twenty-five. So I wanted to thank her for her service. Delver Kimes hit thirty-four on Friday. And Mr. Stumbo, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, his forty-second year of service for the city of Nelsonville. And if you drove in on Canal, or if you got here early enough, he was out mowing along the road right here. Still going hard. So I wanted to thank them, and I'll ask for any questions.
Yeah, I have a question. I asked at the last one we had our committee meetings. Do we know how much the sewer rate increase will be for this year?
That's a good question. It's, there is a financial forecast for the entire project period, as well as five years out from the project, that we did with Curtis Strickland, I was about to ask Jason, his name, Curtis Strickland at RCAP. I didn't come with an answer today, but I have a whole very fun spreadsheet I can send as soon as I get back to the office after the meeting. Why don't we put that on the city website so that everybody can see it? Yeah. And that is the suggested, so that, I should have given context to anyone who wasn't part of those projections. That is the recommendation from the project designers to be able to continue to afford the loan payments on the plant as the plant finishes.
So what kind of number is she fine? Come on, you look at that, you don't.
I looked at it many times, but I can't remember exactly. If I had my email on this computer, I could bring it up right away. I'll send it to you, I promise. I'll send it to you. I don't think it's above the inflation rate. The current inflation rate is six percent, I think it's below that, I remember that. So when we received a large number of grants bringing, thanks to council city managers, Michael Betts deserves a big name drop. That brought the project from forty percent to sixty percent grant. That totally changed the financial picture, so it's a lot better than it started in twenty seventeen.
I think we started at five percent and then had a decrease of four percent, and then I think three percent was on us. That's what was supposed to happen. It was supposed to happen in increments every year, so we wouldn't end up with one big hike to keep it.
And so council, of course, will decide the end, that's the recommendation from the project designers. To continue paying this. All good. Thank you very much. Motion to accept the honor for a second round.
Mr. Dumpy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Sonic. Yes. Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes. Okay, citizens' comments?
Just a couple, Stuart Brooks, one twenty-three East Long Street, Nelsonville, Ohio. Couple comments, one is I talked to our city code manager, which is a personal friend of mine, a colleague, which I think he's doing a very good job. I personally kind of talked Bill into taking his job, and I think it works out very well for him and for the city. But as we started talking to, talking about cars that are banned or cars that are sitting on the streets with the grass burning up, cars that haven't moved. And I asked Bill the other day approximately how many cars did he say were out there? He said probably somewhere around twenty to twenty-two cars, considering. I have seen a lot of them personally, especially on Walnut Street, Chestnut Street. I think we had an ordinance years ago where the tire would be marked by the, by the police department. They're giving whatever, twenty-four hours, and they give another notice, and they're towed and, you know, with Doc Stone or whoever, and then pounded. I think we need to go back to this, uh, this piece. Another car goes to be inside some type of garage. Some of these cars, I won't put out which one, but some of them don't even have correct license plates on them. I would like to see the chief of police report back within thirty days, or be on bill to report that these cars have been identified or what the tow rate would be. But if it continued to me, it looks, it just doesn't look, you know, good. Especially, again, I hate to use pretty hills, because every time everybody wants to paint everything, make it look pretty for that one whole week, you know, have us, try to make it look nice for the whole year. So I'd like to have maybe someone get back with me next council meeting and address this and see if we can start to get this going back to what it used to be. My second one is, is on, on the home, where the tree isn't on the house, which is on Columbus, I think, but that Franklin Street. What's our thought process with that particular, um, property? Or do we just let it sit there?
I, I was told that it's the code enforcement's responsibility to address that. And I was told that he, um, wasn't, wasn't ever assigned to do it. He may not even know it's there the way the foliage is for a mover.
In the day, he found out who actually owns it.
Yeah. There's been a conflict on who actually owns it. Today, he found out who actually owns it. The, the law nurse for the estate or something like this.
It said Chad Davis was the original owner of that, and when he passed away, he set up a trust, is what his son told me. Because I've asked him several times about why they don't clear that up.
Been there for what, six months?
Well, I think it might be a little longer than that.
Longer than that.
It's a year.
It's less tall.
I don't think it's quite a year, but.
So what would, what would, what do you go forward with, what do you mean?
I always give the bill a couple days, so I hate to find out, since today he just found out who actually owns it.
Okay, maybe he can, maybe we get back on our, his report maybe next month, if, you know, new report. Let us know, but that needs to be cleaned up, or somebody needs to be assessed to clean it up, you know, for our city. That's all we got.
Yeah, concerning your question about the parking ordinance.
Yes.
That's been brought to our attention. We will be having a police and fire committee meeting at some point to discuss that ordinance.
Good, let me know, let me know next month, but again, like I said, I can, it's ongoing ordinance, it's ongoing, you know, something that should be.
Yeah, we have other ordinance here, we're gonna look at it.
Right? But we need to at least, you know, get it and start that ordinance and get, you know, the towing and get these parts moved. It'd be good for the city, especially for the fire department, you know, you're sitting there and you've got lots of pretty good sized trucks that's just down on Popper Street that sat there for a long time. And I'm just saying, if, you know, he has a wind and put the fire, it could be a hazard there too, so just let us know if you would please.
That's probably more police than it is code, because police officers have to write the ticket for the towing.
No, I can't, sure.
That's more police than police.
Joy Aluru, three eighty-two West Washington Street. Good evening. Members of council and others who serve our city and govern the city of Nelsonville. Remember the oath that you gave when you received your office. Think of this when you're selecting the candidates for city manager. One may not agree with all the codes and laws and rules, but by taking the oath, a person says that they will enforce and abide by them. Change can occur by discussing, reviewing and revising and looking for answers. We need to do this so that we can serve the citizens of Nelsonville, looking for reasonable choices, not by offhand disregarding what the laws, rules, codes say. Please keep these thoughts in mind. Thank you.
I have a letter to read from Mr. Robert Ryan. June twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Payment of bill to Robert Ryan submitted on approximately six, seven, two thousand twenty-three for the hours spent on labor to plant a hundred and forty-four flowers and eleven flower beds around and adjacent to the public square. A timesheet that I recorded, the days and hour work are available if requested. Forty-five bags of mulch were applied, spread as well as the flower planting and transportation of the material. Three hundred dollars and forty-five bags of mulch were donated in the purchase of the flowers and mulching of the eleven flower beds. Okay. The house located at ninety-eight Jefferson Street, which is adjacent to the southwest side of my house, listed at one oh eight Jefferson Street, had a large, approximately twenty-four inch in diameter white pine fall on it during early morning thunderstorm about February two thousand twenty-three. Since that time, since that time, I don't know what that word is. The woman who rented the house has vacated the premises. The insurance adjuster had been at the house, however, the owners of the house, brothers slash, are in litigation on the transfer ownership of the property, therefore, nothing is being done about the removal, demolition. In the meantime, the drug addicts, cats, rats, and strays are frequenting the premises and creating a health and safety issue. The city has within their power to force the owners into removing this hazard. This is later. Anyone else?
Did the city pay him, or did the city hire him to put him in the department?
Nothing, I never remember approving anything, did you?
Nope, he, uh, so he takes, he solicits funds from, from people to sponsor, I guess, flower beds, and that's where the money comes from. I don't know why he's trying to send the city a bill. He's taken it upon himself to do it, so.
Is it a bill?
And he says he has submitted a bill.
Because it didn't make sense.
Submitted on approximately six, seven, so.
So you should be, you should send it to.
Taylor, do you have a bill? We have a handwritten note, uh, very difficult. It's a little, I'm just being honest, it's a little difficult to make out.
Does it mean crayon?
No. But, so we did, we gave it to the city manager, or the acting city manager, excuse me. And the typical process is the city manager would approve, or department head would submit any purchase or payment vouching for the service, and nobody, the, the plain answer is nobody issued this hire, nobody hired this person, so.
But don't you think a person who volunteers to make Nelsonville more beautiful on his own, because I know the man and I saw what he does, I even provided him with large jugs to make sure he can water the, the flowers in the city, because no one does that. I mean, what is the big deal about trying to give someone who gets back to the city on his own? What's the big deal about paying the bill?
Because there's a liability there, we didn't hire him, he's not insured. And by us paying him, then we would take liability if he was turning stuff in his flowers.
And besides, we probably would have said, we probably would have put it out there, if we were annoyed that he.
He's the only one who's done it for years, I mean.
He's been paid by individuals.
He has been paid by individuals.
Yes, he gets paid, there's individuals paid him. It's a great deed, what he does, it's nice, but he had, I, you know, been paid by, and I, we can say that.
But who pays it?
I paid him.
Yeah.
Others, others.
I made a donation.
Right, but then, yeah.
He donated money.
Mr. Ford, I've got a question. If, 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 if we did not give him permission to do the work, is there still liability to the city if he does the work?
Shouldn't be, uh, but anybody can sue anybody for anything. That's rule number one. So the answer is, we appreciate his work, but you don't have a contract, you don't have approval, thank you for your service. Now, we do agree with the tree at the house beside him.
Yeah. So if you pay the person, then it becomes a liability on the city, because then you're entering into a contract and then, and basically admitting that, yes, he's doing work for the city.
You know, he doesn't bribe because he's afflicted in some way from a bad accident many years ago. He taught school in the Athens school system for years. He truly took a responsibility that belongs to each and every one of us to make our town be the best it can be.
Yeah, he does.
There, you know, there has to be a, a simple fundraiser or something that could benefit, he could benefit from. Because like I said, he has to get somebody to take him to get the items. And he works as hard as you and I would work.
I'll help him together for the next year.
Under different conditions.
He gets, he gets, he gets paid by businesses and other.
The city should at least give him a proclamation, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
A little more than that.
Don't have any first readings. No legislation. City manager's report, and he is on vacation. Any startup updates? Any department updates? Do you have?
All right, since the last update, uh, the plan landing, uh, awarded to the FM Global, or the Renting Grant, we should, I suppose, know where it's due. Source of fire calls, I'll take it off, a lot of those calls at the last meeting, where a lot of U two A, starting fires, that's actually at the last minute now. We're still partnering with Red Cross right now for smirco arm install in the city. Remember, we had actually gotten making assessment of the home and installed detectors and give the appropriate work back to Red Cross, that's how they actually paid for the program. The last meeting, we put six part-time firefighters on. We had seven part-time openings. Four of those positions are provisional, which means they're based on results of a civil service test. For those that don't know, we, we did that because we exhausted our eligibility list already. So each year, based on our needs, we actually advertise and do civil service testing, which is called the event, physical agility testing. These lists are usually good for two years. We exhausted that list in the last hiring process, eliminated some, the agility process. We have one firefighter that's finishing up the EMT class this month. On June fourteenth and fifteenth, I attended an additional active shooter interview response training. This was a, a two-day training that plays in Athens with multiple weights in accounting. Another good class to collaborate with other agencies and build plans before an event happens instead of evaporating. Myself and crew members have been participating in lithium battery, lithium ion battery fire, you know, fire response training. We just performed some through the Ohio Fire Academy last week. As many know, Nelsonville about before, the fire service was definitely, definitely not ready for lithium batteries. Fire service globally. Lithium batteries are almost impossible to extinguish once that unit has thermal runaway. So our processes that we have in place will change as as the, uh, science changes behind extinguishing agents. Right now, it's a very, very large amount of water, submersion. And then once a vehicle is pulled from the water, you know, that unit will actually spot things that heat and make that. We're looking at, for example, the reason I take this so serious, we have bypass that we protect, that Nelson Park protects. And we have multiple charging stations here in the city that now make us a designation for electric vehicles. We're looking at an average of thirty thousand gallons of water to extinguish one vehicle. That's a lot of water.
I can look, like, so soon.
Any lithium battery.
Yeah. Those little ones you put in your, your cameras and stuff?
Yes.
A bucket of water might put that out?
Yes, any lithium battery, once the lithium ignites, very hard to extinguish, whether it's a rechargeable drill or the charging system that they have.
Can you put that on the city side at all?
What's that?
The information about the lithium batteries?
Well, we're still learning, so the, the class that we were in just last week, F D O might deal with this on a daily basis with electric scooters, electric bicycles. Uh, and they're having multitude of fatalities fires that are all due to lithium battery failures. So we're all learning right now as this is unfolding, and right, right now, it's large amounts of water.
Your cell phone batteries, you, they used to catch the FedEx trucks on fire, I mean, you'd get struck on fire.
Any, any lithium batteries, it could be the, the triple A side battery. Lithiums. Thunderdome Valley is coming up, uh, still going forward. We still, the volunteers still have V I P vehicles and, uh, personal, uh, V I P passes that are available. You guys, anybody that's interested in first, there's a part of it. Again, all the money to the V I P tickets goes back into the, uh, current and value fireworks fund. Uh, June fifteenth, crew member participating in Christmas and July event that takes place, the annual event takes place at Weston Church. About about eight, it's, uh, ten to two P M. Uh, twenty twenty-one, we're looking at some stats right now. I worked with a company called H A S or H A S Alert. So in twenty twenty, we had the nationwide fifty emergency responders that were killed by vehicle police while we're out working a roadway. So anytime we're out working on a road, whether it be a bypass, or even on the rest of the street of City Nelsonville, we have close calls with distracted drivers. Um, in the year twenty-two or twenty, twenty-two, I'm sorry, in twenty twenty-seven, firefighters killed, in twenty twenty-three, fifty emergency responders killed. And as of twenty-one, we're looking at nineteen thousand collisions with emergency response vehicles while responding to emergency scenes or reading emergency scenes and route back to quarters. What they're finding in almost all of these cases is distracted drivers. So the company I'm working with right now, called H A S Alert, what they do is they have a system that you put in your apparatus, so if we're on the bypass, we're being seen. And as we know, the bypass is pretty much like a drag strip. There will be alerts to any vehicles in, through their phones, with their mapping systems in their vehicles. And then it will make an alert on the front, on the screen. Emergency response vehicle ahead, approximately how far ahead it is. Let's face it, people are distracted by the nice, pretty screens on their dash. So I'm looking at that system right now to go in, some of our vehicles, not all of them, but the ones that primarily he worked on the bypass. And I don't have numbers together yet. I should have those this week, and then what I'll do is I'll bring those to the police fire committee. Right now, I talked a little bit about the civil service, the other list that has been exhausted. Since the last meeting, I had one part-time firefighter resign, one full-time firefighter resign, and another part-timer that moved to the volunteer roster because they took another higher-paying job. So what I need to do, what I asked for counsel, I think I need to take it to the police and fire committee meeting first, is I'd like to have the part, the, um, the roster amended to the fire department and add numbers to the part-time roster. Now, that's a very minimum, that's a very minimal expense to the city, because the only expense we really have with part-time firefighter would be B M C coverage, some sick time that they, most of them don't even use, and the uniform allowance. Other than that, there's not, there's no benefit package to the part-time firefighter. Ideally, we need to really start looking at putting money towards building our full-time supports. But it's gonna be a lot cheaper for the city to add part-time firefighters. Now, this doesn't add to the shifts, this doesn't add to scheduled shifts, that all this is is a pool of firefighters that I can pull from to cover up the shifts, or a cover shift with something I call a rock or somebody's shit. So whether we had thirteen firefighters, which is what I have on the part-time roster now, or twenty-five, there's not gonna be additional members working shifts. It just allows me to be able to use those firefighters to cover shifts that are open. We can work those shifts at, at part-time rate of pay, or we can work those shifts at a mandated full-time firefighter rate of pay, and sometimes they're not. It's cheaper to work the part-time. There is a disadvantage to that, and I, and I can tell everybody ahead of time, there's no value to the city, the part-time work. Most of my part-time firefighters have three to five other jobs. They bounce from house to house, and once the full-time job opens up, they usually leave, uh, in their position. We need to know that ahead of time. We need to understand that emphasize on part-time and not full-time, that's what we're gonna get the part-time. But I think right now, the widest choice in the city would be to add some names, to add, add some numbers to that part-time roster, so I have more available firefighters to pull up. And I can take that to the police and fire committee.
That's how I'd do it, start it there.
Other than that, that's all I've got.
Okay, any questions for chief?
Uh, just wanted to clarify. So you, so you had a full-time resign, you had a part-time resign, and then a full-time that moved to volunteer, did you think?
I had a part-time to sit down to volunteer for the full-time job.
Part-time.
Yes. I full-time resigned and a part-time.
Can you send all that information, the email, to us?
Hmm? To the committee?
Yeah.
Yep, I can get some stuff together, even get some more concrete numbers.
Anyone else? I can cheer. Jason.
Start off with July tenth, Monday, July tenth, Canal Street, some of these shut down, but it's two days, then Murray Street again, uh, where we have the water leak under there, they've got to dig, they're digging in a carrier pipe, so it's gonna be sleeved under the roof, so they're gonna get it dug in real quick, get it dropped in, cover it back up, and then make a next sort of pipe in it. They're hoping for two days.
What size main is that, do you know?
Eight.
Eight-inch main?
There was a flush hydrant hit in Brooklyn yesterday, just seeing those, it was over behind the church on Back Street. Now, we've got new some stuff called in, it'll be fixed Thursday. It's just a flash, it's just, it's a, it's a too much flush out. But it, it didn't look like there was anything else back there, so it was me. I, I called Scott, and then I said, attention. But that'll be fixed Thursday. Uh, hot box is fixed finally, and we'll be out doing asphalt tomorrow and Wednesday. I don't know, six ton tomorrow and six ton Wednesday. Leaking the pool was actually slowed down. Not real sure how, it slowed down, it's on seventeen thousand gallons of it. The sweeper, I don't know if anybody's seen it, back out on the street today, we had a short and a wire for water pumps on it. Traced it down, got it fixed. The pumps are actually working better than they ever had. Well, it's getting pretty good water to it. Since the last meeting, we've had eleven after-hours callouts in nine weeks. And to answer councilman Sherman's question from the last meeting, the M C C startup is July fifth, sixth, and seventh. The plant startup is July twentieth, and we're doing a startup on the lift station. It's a water plant tomorrow.
What's an M C C station, first lady?
M C C is, it's something with the electronics.
Master Electronic Control.
I, I know that that was our holdup, that was our big holdup in planning to get machine installation. That came in last month.
Any questions for Jason?
That machine that they have on the Murray Street, is that simply stupid?
That's the contractor's, it's sitting there because when they start digging in the Murray Street, that's what they're gonna do.
Well, it's just stuck there for a long time. No, I was saying.
Because they finished that up, they did a lot of things, they did water lines, they did sewer lines, they did storm lines. And they were hoping to get started before the plant, but just the way the hollowed out and everything falls, they're not, they're not stuck.
Okay, so when you say start, start water. Oh, okay, so that's just gonna stay there because they don't have a place to put it. All right.
Okay, Jason, I know Meyer Street, they're working on it, but you know, the, the block with the Mexican restaurant, and it's all blocked off, half of it because of the cement and stuff. Are you aware on the other side, there's a hole starting? Right in front of, right across from my mom's, at one eighty, one eighty-five.
I drove through today, and I see a couple small street plates, I didn't know.
And it's right in that area, but it's right there where Danny had his houses. Yes. Wanted to let you know. I just know that roads are hot mess right now, and everything's going on, but I didn't know if you knew that or not. Thank you.
And that fill that's in that, that's, would you say that's soft, it's soft something?
It's not concrete, it's, it's, yeah, CDI, rush fill.
Yeah, cause it looks like concrete, but you can take the foot and discover it.
Pretty much digable concrete. It's set, uh, it gives a good base, if you gotta get in and dig, actually, you can dig it. It's got a jackhammer, but a hundred percent compatible.
All right.
I have a question. I, I know Chief Tolliver is right here, um, the, I know the dispatcher's contract was up in March, and he was supposed to be doing something about getting it done. Would you know if the contract has been done?
The contract for what?
Dispatch, with Hocking College or dispatching?
No, I do not know anything about that.
Okay.
Okay, all right. No other questions for Jason or any questions at all?
No.
Okay. All right, good to the order.
Can I speak to, on good to the order? I was gonna speak under business, but I noticed it's not on here, business and.
Business and organizational comment?
Yeah, it's not on this. Okay, good. It's just a little history lesson. I've reached that point in my life, I'm old enough now to remember how things got to be where they are. And I just wanna talk a little bit about the city park and the pool. That used to be, for those of you who may not have lived here then, or may not be old enough to remember this, but I don't see any of you here that fits that. Um, it was a gravel lot, and a group of women called Andorian Club got together and we decided it needed to be more than a gravel lot, and we needed a city park there. And I don't know, maybe y'all know this, but I just don't want this to be forgotten. And after we got Joe Edward's blessing, because we had to, um, before, that was a gravel lot, and the only thing on it was, once, one week a year, they used it for the rides for the parade in the hills. And so we all got together and we raised money, and our husbands, um, put the first, they worked there, Jay, in the middle of August, sweating, digging holes to put swing sets. Um, so it's a group effort from a group of women with the support of the Barrett-Sewell Foundation, and eventually the city took the park because we couldn't really handle it. Um, so I, I guess my point here is, one, I don't want it to ever be forgotten how the park got there, and two, it's a perfect example of citizens, Barrett-Sewell Foundation, and our city working together to make something happen. And I hope we can all remember that and, and do that again. I'm not sure what that is, but, um, things get forgotten, and unless somebody like me, who was there during that time, reminds people, um, I just don't want it to be forgotten, so that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, good to the order. I'll lead off tonight, um.
Yeah.
I just wanted to congratulate Mr. Colton Flowers on his, the little man departed today for the big boot camp of the U S Army. Uh, I've known Colton since he was about four years old, and, uh, I wish him luck, because he's gonna need it, it's gonna be rough. So, I don't know, hopefully he doesn't get the redhead, hopefully the redhead doesn't come out on the drill instructors, so, cause that won't be good. Mr. Sherman?
Well, a few questions for the good order, actually. Uh, after doing some research here, and I'll give Mr. Toy a copy, and then he can pass it on to you guys. There's been a lot of research done on the actual legality of, uh, U, which comments, uh, counsel as far as being able to rescind a resignation. So, uh, the Athens County Board of Elections. So, so, so this has to actually go to the, uh, state secretary and the attorney general, and that's where it's gonna head to, to clarify your legality. So, all right.
All right, just want everybody to hear, save your phone.
Mr. Coleman?
Um, yeah, I'd like to look at scheduling, the judiciary committee meeting and the police and fire at some point. So we can, um, work on getting that scheduled. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor?
So last week, an email chain was started amongst council members regarding Mr. Tolliver's comments in the Athens Independent regarding the June twelfth meeting. Comments were aimed at a citizen of this community, and by some, uh, council, they considered the comments out of line. Another comment made, nothing will be done. Some members of council told Mr. Tolliver, "Should even be reprimanded." I'm here to ensure that something is done because of these comments. I too am outraged. The mere fact that we do not treat people equally or fair in this, this community is egregious. That Mr. Tolliver can make these comments, albeit factual in context, yet punishable. But we have another city employee administrator assistant that makes disparaging comments regarding another city resident and former city manager, and nothing is to be said or done. Her commentary even to the point of making bold accusations that he stole from the city, now opening up the further, the city to further liability, yet nothing to be said, nothing to be done. So, yeah, to say the least, I'm outraged. We have folks in this community who feel they are elite, they are better than others. Mr. Tolliver's comments are simply standing up for those within this community. This citizen, these comments pertain, went on to call Nelsonville Hudville, and continually repeating it throughout the meeting. No outrage here by our council members. Yet, if I recall, he was one of the main contributors of how HUD came into this city, and to the extent at which it is in this city. However, he left that out of his resume when applying for the open county seat. That same citizen stated in an earlier public meeting that he discouraged business from coming to this community. So the fact that we want to attack Mr. Tolliver for his comments, for speaking out and standing up for some, especially those in this community that feel they don't have a voice, is commendable. I stand behind it. And I'll back and support any city manager or city manager candidate that is willing to do the same. Because unlike this citizen, in which he is speaking out about, not all of us had silver spoons growing up. Not all of us had family that failed without.
That don't go there.
Oh, he's out of. He's out of.
Don't give me that. Don't give me that.
He's a good one to talk to.
Yeah, don't give me that. I don't wanna hear that from you.
Some of us had to work hard.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And Mr. Tolliver, a hundred percent right. Some of these citizens he's standing up for, they need a break.
Unbelievable.
Some of them need encouragement. To allow them to persevere, to break the chain in the attempt to succeed.
Unbelievable.
I'll tell you, that talking down to them, name calling, shaming these people because of their circumstances is definitely not the solution, nor is it.
I'd be running back.
Oh, it's a neat, good.
This behavior is only a way for these elites to make themselves feel bigger and better. Some on council have created a soft.
That comes from the city manager, stole from the city.
Yeah.
Soft for them to become a deal that they have been accepted in these elite clubs, like the breakfast clubs, the freedom of, brigade.
Come on, come on.
It's my turn.
Wow. He's been waiting all six months for this.
Addressed just one of your issues, which was already addressed, which was already addressed in that chain of emails.
Such a mess.
You asked, you mentioned that the other city employee, the administrator, the assistant, nothing was said to her. I responded in the email, and I will say it again, yes, indeed it was. The acting city manager, Mr. Tolliver, spoke with her after he met with her and the other new employees and gave them their employee handbooks. He kept her back after the meeting, and the. he kept her back after the meeting and explained to her that as, in that position, she had to be careful what she said and where she said it in regards to the city and city employees. So, yes, she did. Nothing apparently has been done about Mr. Tolliver's comment. So you can reassure, excuse me, their opinions. Anyway, the other thing I would like to say is, everybody try to stay cool and remember that those of us who are not born with a silver spoon in our mouth, a lot of those people who were born with a silver spoon in their mouth, because sometimes they buy you breakfast.
All right, um, motion to go into executive session one twenty-one, Rock twenty-two, personnel legal matters.
Wow.
Mr. Duncan?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Simon?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes. Yes.
Yes, with a caution that we don't continue to defame other people's characters.
Unbelievable.
Okay. Uh, going into executive session at seven fifty-three.
Oh, I did.
Okay, I'm inviting in Mr. Toy. Mr. Sherman, you can stay here.